Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 4th, 2008, Meeting of the Glendale City Council, Election Day, Election Evening. Mr. City Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Draymond.
Here.
And the flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Yusefian.
Please stand, and I'll after me. Andrew Amart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every hand and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Mr. Mayor and Council, today is Election Day, an important day that should remind every American why we are the beacon of freedom and hope in the world. For tonight's invocation, I would like to share an excerpt from a poem by Langston Hughes entitled "Freedom's Plow." I'll read the last stanza of this powerful poem that speaks volumes as we resolve to fight and honor our American values. A long time ago, an enslaved people heading toward freedom made up a song. Keep your hand on the plow and hold on. The plow plowed a new furrow across a field of history, and into that furrow the freedom seed was dropped. From that seed, a tree grew, is growing, will ever grow. That tree is for everybody, for all America, for all the world. May its branches spread and shelter grow until all races and all peoples know its shade. Keep your hand on the plow and hold on. We pray for the tree of liberty and freedom to grow strong, to shelter generations of Americans to come. Amen.
Mr. City Clerk, could you hear your report, please?
The agenda for the November 4th, 2008, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 30th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, thank you very much, and let's hear the first item.
At 3:00 is presentation appointments, and at 3:00 is agenda preview for the meeting of November 12th, 2008.
Thank you, and with that, let's go to Assistant City Manager Bob McFaul.
Thank you very much. First, just as a reminder, normally, November 11th, Tuesday, would be the council day. However, it has a holiday that day, the city is closed. The city council meeting then will be held on Wednesday, November 12th, all the normal times. At 2:30 in the afternoon, there will be redevelopment agency meeting with one item on it. It's the discussion of the Americana brand, the project objectives and evaluation, the direct and indirect financial impacts. That evening, the city council meeting, starting at 6 o'clock, there's two items to be considered. The first, the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power will be submitting a report regarding the authorization to approve the Glendale Water and Power Glendale Care Benefit Program. And then, secondly, there will be a hearing. The Director of Planning will be facilitating on the appeal of tentative parcel map number GLN 1622. This is regarding a residence located at 3761 Hillway Drive.
Thank you very much, Mr. McFaul. Before we go on, I'd like to take a moment, just before we go into council and staff comments, to read into the record just a brief statement about a news item that is has an all-too-human face to it. And I'd like to begin by asking to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mary Nalbandian, who, as you all know, lost her life October 29th in a traffic accident on Glenwood Road near Toll Middle School. Mary was 11 years old. Mary has been described as a fun-loving girl, whose enthusiasm for life was infectious with everyone she encountered. She was always said to be wearing a smile, and her mother called her an angel. We can only imagine, as a council, we can only imagine her pain, the pain of her family, her friends, that they are feeling as they mourn the loss of this child who was taken so early in her life. And we can only imagine the anguish the driver and her family must also be feeling. I would like to thank the city emergency crews and the high school teacher who responded to this terrible accident, and who did their best to save Mary. In addition, I would like to acknowledge the grief counselors who provided comfort to Mary's classmates and friends. In light of this terrible accident, I want to assure the community that the city and the Glendale Unified School District are reviewing the safety issues associated with Glenwood Road. Eight years ago, following a tragic accident at Toll Middle School, representatives of the city and the Glendale Unified School District came together in a unified effort to implement traffic and pedestrian safety measures on Glenwood Road. Multiple street improvements, including embedded flashing lights, new signs, and the addition of crossing guards, came about through this unified process. I have every confidence that this cooperative effort will once again bring a thorough analysis of traffic safety issues in that area. And also, at this time, I would ask my colleagues on the council to join me in requesting that our staff at GTV6, who have previously produced an excellent video on pedestrian safety, that they would please work on a similar video to be aired on GTV6 that would focus on student driver and vehicular safety in school areas, also for airing on GTV6. And in the interim, our thoughts and prayers are with Mary and Mary's family, with friends as they mourn the loss of this very special girl. Thank you. Mr. Kasakian?
Next, the city council and staff comments.
Comments from my colleagues. Mr. Weaver, Mr. Quintero, anything?
Just to thank the Masonic Lodge, they had an awards program for police and fire. It was very well attended, and Joe Avazzi is generally the person that puts it together. The food was from Damon's. It was a great event. Also, Verdugo Woodlands had their annual Homeowners Association get-together, and that was another great event, very well attended.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
I'll pass, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also had the opportunity to go to the Red Cross's fundraiser, the comedy night. It was very funny, as they said, so we enjoyed it. They had a lot of people who came to the event. Actually, they filled up the theater at 5:00 and also at 7:00. The other item that I would like to bring up, Mr. Mayor, I did receive an email from a gentleman. His name is Monsaret Allen, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because he starts his email by saying that even though I'm writing an email, I know that nobody's going to do anything about this anyway, and I lived in here for 25 years. He lives in East Chestnut Street. At least 15 to 20 times a day, he tries to go through his street, and he's unable to do that due to the fact that people double park. They also park in front of the driveways, and it has been very difficult to drive through that street. Chestnut Street, between Chevy Chase and Adams, is only one block long, and has to be one of the darkest streets in this city. He has lived in this street for over 10 years, and has questioned several times where the streetlights are, and he has not gotten an answer for that. So I brought this up, so Mr. Allen, he would not know, he would think that we do read the emails, and don't give up hope. I'm handing your email to Mr. Starbird as we go, and he will look into dealing with some of those issues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. As a matter of fact, last night, when I read his email, I also forwarded, just as you have now, a copy to Mr. Zern and to Mr. Starbird on the same topic. And I did reply to this gentleman as well, to let him know that his information has been passed along. Please never, never think that your council isn't reading your emails or your letters. We do, and even though some of us don't have time to respond directly, we certainly forward the information on to the appropriate party. Mr. Starbird?
And Mr. Mayor, with your forwarding, I had already sent the item, both the GWP as well as police, to give me their thoughts on what we can do. Certainly, GWP can look at the area relative to appropriate lighting levels, so we've already forwarded it on.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Mr. Weaver?
I'd just like to add, after we read some of the emails to us, we delete them immediately, so we have a good day. Well, it's kind of a joke. They're ripping us up.
We'll decide, it's kind of a joke.
You know, we say we don't need to keep these. We dispose them.
Okay. I would also, before we move on from the council comments, and just, I hope everyone got the word, but if there is anyone here on the AlTura Avenue appeal, that hearing has been continued to, well, moved, actually, until November the 18th?
18th.
18th, Tuesday, November the 18th. And hopefully, everyone heard that. So if you're looking in, waiting for that, that will be the new date. And then, lastly, I just wanted to check on an agenda item. Some time ago, Councilmember Najarian had asked about an ethics ordinance, and I just want to check on that to see where we might be with it.
The head of staff, I'm not sure offhand where it is, but I think we have it scheduled in an out-meeting. Let's see if I can find it.
The reason I'm asking is because the last time we checked on it, we were still trying to find out where it was, and.
I think it was first meeting in January.
They asked that we get a target date on that.
Yeah, and I think that's set for the first meeting in Janu- first or second meeting in January.
Okay.
And I'll look at this together right now as well.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any staff comments? Mr. Kasakian?
Just want to point out the obvious, that the polls are still open. They will be open until 8:00. If anyone has not voted, please make sure that you go to the polls. If you're not able to make it to your own poll, if you're resident of LA County, you can vote at any polling location provisionally. Just go in, ask for a ballot, tell them that you're just voting there because you can't make it to your own poll, and the polls are supposed to stay open until every last person in line has voted, so they can potentially stay open later than 8:00.
They should vote even though CNN's already called it.
Sure. Don't know if it hasn't been called yet, but people should vote, because there's many important issues in California, such as the propositions and other important significant issues of concern to the taxpayers and citizens of this state.
Not to mention state offices as well.
I never believed the media. Until the last words counted.
Are there any other comments? Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Next item is, items including, it's following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Yusefian?
I would like to move, I would like to pull 5B and move the rest.
Be like Boyd.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on A, C, and D. Mr. Kasakian, if you would, please.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver. Hi. Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Could we hear the item at 5B?
The Director of Public Works regarding request for an increase in the contract amount to provide installation and maintenance of meter equipment, data collection and reporting and annual services with regards to wastewater flow monitoring. At B1, is motion authorizing the City Manager to increase the contract amount with HDR Design Build, Inc., in the amount of $100,000.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Mr. Yusefian?
Mr. Mayor, the reason I pulled this out is because the staff report basically says that the contract was originally for $210,000 over a five-year period, which is $42,000 per year, $3,500 per month. That's understandable. My question is, the staff is requesting additional $100,000, and $100,000 is intended to be used only for additional services should unforeseen conditions arise. Environmental management staff believes that since all of the sewer flow monitoring equipment is the same, it would be best if they have necessary funds in the contract should future equipment replacement be necessary. So my question is from Mr. Zern, since he deals with all the sewer issues. Why do you want the $100,000 now, since there is apparently still money in there, and you intend to spend the $3,500 to basically, per month, to upgrade the equipment? So why don't you come back to us when the equipment, there's something wrong with the equipment, and ask for money?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, this is one of the reasons why we're here, there is something wrong with the equipment right now. The original contract was for the operation and maintenance, which is essentially setting the flow monitoring devices, taking the data, converting the data, and bringing it to us. There was no contingency. That was our oversight, not having any level of contingency for additional services or for the unforeseen equipment breakdown that may occur. We've got two flow monitoring devices now that need work, and we're anticipating that a couple of the others may also need to be looked at in order to make sure that they don't. The last thing we want is for these things to go south, and we miss a monitoring date, because with our agreement with LA, we'll then have to take their numbers. And we've, one of the things we negotiated in the contract was they would use our numbers, because we've never quite agreed with the numbers that they have. So we want to make sure that these are always functioning at a high level. The other, the other answer to that question is, we've begun to take some monitoring data at different locations in the city, for a couple of reasons. Some of them are strategic, in where we may want to move our wastewater flow in the future, which could be financially beneficial to the city, because if we don't, we dispose of our waste in LAG, Los Angeles-Glendale, it's a lot cheaper for us than having it flow directly to Hyperion, and we are charged a lot more for that. So we've, I've asked my guys to set these devices at various locations in the city to get data that's above and beyond the seven flumes that are under the amalgamated agreement, but to gather information and data that may help us decide where we would build future sewers or upsize future sewers to increase capacity flow to LAG.
Not in the report, but that's okay. Thank you for the information. And with that, I'll move the item.
Okay, we, so we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Councilmember Najarian?
I have a question. Mr. Zern, wouldn't it be better if we place the risk of equipment failure on this organization, on HDR, because they are installing it, they're maintaining it, they're monitoring it? Looks like it's all in their hands, and it breaks, and it's like, oh, city, by the way, your flow meter is broken. You know, I'm not sure if they even are the ones that provided the equipment to begin with. Perhaps they did. So it's all in their hands, it seems like they should be the ones bearing the risk of any failure, especially since it looks like we're having some significant failure rates on these items.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Najarian, good point. We actually provided them with the original equipment, so there was some issue with that and how we would work out a maintenance agreement. But our goal for when this five-year agreement is up, which will be 2010, is to work out something more along the lines of, you provide everything, and then we'll pay one monthly fee, and it's sort of a turnkey operation. From transitioning from our previous contractor to this one was a little difficult. There's not a whole lot of firms that do this. There's not a whole lot of firms that are reliable, as we found out the hard way with our previous contractor. So this is big money for us. A mistake one way can cost us a lot of money in our payments to the city of LA. So this firm has done a very good job for us, but I think in the future, you're right, we ought to look at different options, including the turnkey option with them just providing everything. I prefer that myself. I think that's a good idea, and something we will definitely pursue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion before we vote? No? All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver. Hi. Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Mr. Kasakian, at Oral Communications at 6, I want to, because of the sort of abbreviated meeting and the fact that it is election night, I want to take Oral Communications at this time.
Mr. Najarian.
So that people can leave. I have one speaker card for, actually, two in total. If there's anyone else that plans to speak at Oral Communications, they should probably bring their cards up at this time. That being said, let's begin with Leon Mayer, who has an announcement. Three minutes on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here to talk about two events. Tomorrow night is the last appearance at the library of Sonia Nazario to talk about her book, about, excuse me, Enrique's Journey. This is a true story of the dangerous odyssey of Enrique, a young man in Mexico, who was lived in Honduras, actually, and he wanted to come to Southern California to meet, see his mother, who had come here earlier on to earn a living and send money home. It's a great book, and the lady who wrote it, Sonia Nazario, is a Pulitzer Prize winner, and she, in winning the Pulitzer Prize for this story, actually retraced the steps that Enrique took when he came here from Honduras. That's tomorrow night, and if you can't make it tomorrow night, and there's a lot of interest in this one book, One Glendale, event, if you can't make it tomorrow night, there's having, they're having at Glendale College, a similar appearance by Sonia Nazario. Now, as far as our next event, the Friends Event, it's November 19th, 7:00, Wednesday, we're going to have Ed Begley Jr. He's the son of Academy Award winner Ed Begley Sr. And Ed Begley Jr. is a leading person in the Hollywood community in the area of environment, and he's written a book called Living Like Ed, A Guide to the Eco-Friendly Life. And I'll tell you more about Ed Begley next Wednesday. As I understand, there will be a meeting next Wednesday, so I'll talk to you about him more next Wednesday. So start marking your calendars for the 19th for Ed Begley, tomorrow night for Sonia Nazario and Enrique's Journey, and Thursday at the college, if you can't make it, and I have flyers for about Ed Begley, if I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, our first speaker on the regular five-minute slot is Dottie Yelsick, followed by Stephen
Dottie Yelsick, a resident of Glendale, California. Before I start using up my precious 300 seconds of this time, I'd like to make a comment about a speaker from last week's Oral Communications, and that was the gentleman who spoke on behalf of his son, who was fired from the Glendale Police Department, just shy of his probationary period. And I would just like to make a comment that I hope an authentic inquiry is done into that matter, because if a new hire cannot perform a job, that's one thing, but if there is abusive authority by a fire captain, that's something very different, and I hope it's not the latter. But I'm glad that there would be an inquiry into it. Now, back to my situation about the Verdugo Park incident on the 21st of September. Councilwoman Najarian, I liked your comment. When things go awry in communications, you say, let's be clear. So let's be clear about what happened, and then I will give you a slight follow-up. On September 21st, a group of about 10 to 15 people from a marathon training group was standing in the lower level of the parking lot, it's public parking lot number 33 of Verdugo Park, when an armed gentleman, an armed person approached our group. He was not in uniform, he was, there was no clothing, he was wearing no clothing that was, would identify him as any kind of a security guard, and he told us that, oh, he was also wearing a black jacket that concealed about 90% of a badge he was wearing. And he told us that if we didn't move our cars by, out of the lower level by 10:30, we would not have access to them until 6:00 that evening. Okay, when I asked him what his name was, he said, it's irrelevant. When I asked him who he worked for, he said, it's irrelevant. So that's why I found the need to get ahold of the Glendale Police using the non-emergency phone number. Okay, on this, on Sunday, October 26th, Sergeant Thomas Lorenz handed delivered to me a letter from supposedly, and I'll go and I'll say, yes, it probably is from Chief of Police, Randy G. Adams. And he said, in Chief Adams's letter, he said, okay, well, let me back up just a tad here. I'm well aware that in any organization, in many organizations, especially where public relations is concerned, it is not unusual to have that letter written by a staff member, and it can even be signed by a staff member. However, I think Chief Adams indeed based his assessment of this situation on the conditions that were present at 8:15 in the morning and not at 7:15. At 7:15, the police officers were not there. At 7:15, Sergeant Lorenz was not there. And at 8:15, it was entirely different. The security officer had taken off the black jacket that covered his badge. He had put on his security shirt. Now, that is entirely different than what happened at 7:15, and I think, in my estimation, with all due respect, that Chief Adams based his report on what happened at 8:15 and not what happened at 7:15. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Yelsick.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Pruitt. I'm the father of three young boys attending Mark Keppel Elementary School, and I just wanted to bring to the council's attention the traffic situation that has existed in the area of the three schools, Keppel, Toll, and Hoover, for a very long time, as long as I've been taking my children to those schools. And maybe in light of the tragedy that happened last week in between Hoover and Toll. In my experience and in my observations in the past five years of going there, the traffic situation has only gotten worse. Parents, certain ones, are dropping off their children in the morning in dangerous situations. I've seen it right in front of me. I know that certain city elements are aware of the problem, as there is some form of effort going on there to mitigate the situation, but in my opinion, it is terribly ineffective. And I'm just asking the council to ensure that any and all city resources be directed and committed to solving this problem before another tragedy like this strikes. The situation is acute, and in my observations, it's restricted to the morning hours, when all three schools are apparently starting at about the same time. There are an awful lot of drivers and pedestrians, and I am afraid to say that it's likely just a matter of time before something again happens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pruitt. Under the category of directing, Mr. Staff, Mr. Starbird, you might want to recap for him exactly where we are with this. And Mr. Pruitt wasn't here when we were talking about this earlier, so.
Well, as Mr. Pruitt's probably aware, following the incident of seven or eight years ago, and it wasn't a traffic incident, it was actually the stabbing that occurred, but the issue of traffic came up a great deal back then. I imagine you might have had one of your children in school back then. A great deal was done at that time, looking at the issue of traffic, pedestrian safety, the interface between students, and particularly the issue of the drop-offs. A lot of changes were made then, as you're probably well aware of, the crossing guards, the one-way streets in the area, this crosswalk in particular, bumping out the sidewalks so that we narrowed the cross area for students down to 27 feet, the installation of the, what we call the disco lights in the roadway. That's not to say that eliminated the interface and conflicts between cars and parents and students. That still exists, and this is obviously a tragic example of that. Having said all of that and done all of that, what I've indicated is that we are meeting again to continue to review the situation at Hoover, Keppel, Toll, to see if there isn't more than can reason be done to prevent this sort of situation from occurring. I'm meeting with the transportation and police staff just this week, and we have a meeting set up with the school district staff, because they're also part of finding a solution to this. And we're meeting with them in the very near future to go over all the information we have, and again, to leave no stone unturned as we look at how to avoid this kind of situation. Seven or eight years ago, issues that arose that we debated at length included closing the street, which seems to be a rather quick reaction from many people, but of course, that just displaces the situation. We just have a lot of students, a lot of teachers, a lot of parents, a lot of cars, all converging at the same time in a relatively small area, and that creates some tremendous conflicts and challenges, but we are going to look at all of those things again.
Have you considered meeting with community members?
Well, that'll be part of this. We did that seven years ago. Well, that'll be part of this, and we did that seven years ago. A tremendous number of meetings, there was a lot of them, and again, the meetings seven or eight years ago weren't triggered by a traffic incident, they were triggered by what ended up being a bit of a gang incident, but traffic became a big point of contention. And with that, I don't know how many community meetings, but I was involved in many of them, our traffic staff with the neighborhoods, out of that came a lot of debate, and sometimes different opinions about the impact of the one-way street cutlets, the two crossing guards at the two main intersections, east and west, the change in the drop-off areas, the involvement of the administrators of the schools on drop-off, and I thought some staggering of the start times at the schools, but I'm not completely aware of how much of that was done. But yes, meeting with the community, interacting with the community administrators will be part of that.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that, thank you.
That was my understanding that the three schools have staggered start hours. Is that true?
But how staggered remains, remains a question, I don't know.
It's 15 minutes.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Pruitt, stay tuned.
Thank you. I will.
All right, thank you. That is my last speaker card for Oral Communications, so I will close Oral Communications. Mr. Kusakian, if we could take the next item, please.
On that last issue, on the issue of Oral Communication, as we go down the path of re-studying this issue with the, with the traffic patterns there, I think it would be important for us to also include the traffic and transportation initiatives in that mix.
We can do that.
And they will be.
And they will be, yeah. All right, very good. Mr. Mulhill was waiting patiently, so as not to interrupt, so we'll reopen Oral Communications and take him, and then at this time.
But I thought Oral Communications is at the end of the evening.
Yes, normally that's true, but because of the election, we're trying to let people out of here.
Okay.
That's the reason.
Okay, wait till they hit the clock, okay? All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilman. The future city payroll. Pension plan losses are mounting. Daily News, October 9th, 2008. Taxpayers may get the bill for public retirement systems, system shortfalls. Taxpayers might ultimately have to bail out the government retirement plans. CalPERS holds 56% of its investment portfolio in the stock market. Pension obligation, or the 500-ton elephant in the meeting rooms. California bonds are becoming more difficult to sell as the state goes before and red is all over the place. Pension plan obligation are an albatross around our neck for the near future. Solution. Besides reduction in city services and employees, the following would be a good start for the future. City fire union will be the next contract before the city council in 2009. Negotiation should not increase firemen's pay, benefits, or pensions. Truly be tough negotiators with their union. All new hires will no longer have a pension plan, but Social Security. All new hires will be paid the prevailing wages as federal employees. Advise the union that if they do not like the new terms and conditions, that the city will not, the city will outsource the fire department. Baze out the current contract with the fire union, knowing that eventually the city will be offering its employees fair salaries and benefits without belonging to CalPERS. Upon retirement, firemen will have a 401K plan plus Social Security, just like the non-government workers in this city. As the fire union will be the first union to face the current recession, that the other city unions know that the ultimate goal of the city is to freeze all wages and benefits, and that all new hires will only have a 401K on retirement plus their Social Security. City will eventually no longer be part of CalPERS. These tough negotiations will put the city in the driver's seat and not under the control of the unions. By reducing the amount of money the city has to pay its employees in salaries and benefits, we will have more money to provide the taxpayers with better services and benefits. I'm also leaving behind here, because I know you, the council people do not have all the time to read the newspapers, but I've been collecting newspaper articles for the past two weeks, what's going on with this economy. Investors brace for a risk of de-inflation. Jobless rates. Funds for the agenda for legislative sessions. As demand declines, risk of deflation rises. Bankruptcy rises in October. Manufacturing activity shrinks to a new low of, in 26 years. Circuit City, powers down, and fear is bankruptcy. Even in the city of Los Angeles, they're talking about having their top employees give back 10%. Daily Grille did this recently. Economic crisis in Glendale schools. Gas prices are low, but so are the 401Ks. Seven billion loan buys the Titanic. Pension plan looms and mounting, daily news. Even our county supervisor, Jurgoslawski, says CalPERS is strangling us. State could face historic fiscal crisis. California among the hardest hit. Wall Street may lay off 200,000 employees. More middle-class homeless, middle-class people, not the poor, not the rich, the middle class, or at the breadlines today. Restaurants are starving for customers. Gentlemen, we are in a crisis right now, and we must take the initiative and change the way we, we hire our employees. We can no longer afford the pensions, because as the sales tax shrinks, we have to raise the taxes on the citizens. Plus, they're being taxed by the federal government and the state government to make up for their pension plans. I think the day of CalPERS should be history. Thank you. I will leave you with these business articles, I know you all don't have time to read every day, but I put up, made a nice little package here, so at your leisure, you can read all these articles I've been collecting for the past two weeks. I'll leave you with already.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mulhill. All right, Mr. Kusakian, I will close Oral Communications again. Let us go on to the next item.
Item 8, Action Item, City Treasurer, Regarding City Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Review, as of September 30th, 2008, at 8:01 is a motion to note and file report.
Okay, thank you. And on that most timely segue, Mr. Baruchy, let us welcome you back, Mr. City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor.
And if you would please, give us your, your report.
Before we get into the composition of the portfolio, I think perhaps we should go over the numbers for the third quarter. The city portfolio ended the first quarter of the fiscal year at $440 million, down $29 million from the $469 million at the end of the last quarter. $22 million of that difference was the prepayment of the annual PERS assessment, and that took place in July. Somebody gave me a call this morning and said, "Did you catch the news press article?" So I went around to find the news press article, and there in the article, it alluded to the presentation, and it seemed to indicate that the other $7 million, the difference from the 29, the 22 from the 29, that 7 resulted in trading activities of the portfolio. That's not the case at all. That really represents over three months' worth changes in the portfolio, it is not a loss, it is simply payments taken out of the portfolio, probably held in special funds or enterprise funds or capital improvement programs, being spent out of the portfolio. So I just wanted to clear that for the benefit of those in the audience, and certainly for those watching on TV. Interest earnings for the quarter decreased about $300,000 to a tad over $3.9 million, and that reflected the slippage of the average rate of return for the quarter by 15 basis points to 3.56%, down from 3.71%. Incidentally, the rate of return for the state fund, the local agency investment fund, fell 34 basis points to 2.77% for the quarter. Gentlemen, I don't have to tell you that these are extraordinary financial times. It's, it's been difficult to pause, reflect, and comment on events when the financial markets are so volatile, dynamic, and unpredictable. So rather than give a, give a report that might be old news, let's take a look at our city portfolio and see how it's positioned to meet the immediate challenges. At the end of the quarter, at the end of September, as we said, the portfolio totaled $440 million. That's broken down in the overview, we break it down in the longer end and the short end. Nothing complicated about that. The short end is what we need for, what we anticipate the needs will be to take care of cash flow for the next 12 months. Anything beyond that, we would put into the longer end. The longer end, the longer you go out on the yield curve, as you gentlemen remember, usually the greater the return. So, on the longer end, it sits at 70% of our portfolio and consists of 65% federal agencies and 9% in corporate notes. The larger total, the 65% of our portfolio, our federal agency holdings are primarily federal home loans, Fannie Mae's, and Freddie Mac's. With the government takeover over Fannie Mae and Freddie, our federal agency position is actually stronger than before the takeover, as the government guarantee is now more explicit than implicit. The remaining 9% in corporate notes is in AAA and AA-rated paper, and is comprised of the following names. We hold General Electric Capital, Bank of America, Toyota Credit, US Bank, Credit Suisse First Boston, Walmart, and Wells Fargo. Please note that we don't hold any names that have been making the news, the financial headlines, in the last few months. We don't have AIG, we don't have Goldman Sachs, Morgan Stanley, there's no United Bank of Switzerland, and we certainly don't have, or never held, IndyMac, Lehman Brothers, Bear Stearns, or Washington Mutual Paper. The corporate notes that we hold are sound today, but some require regular monitoring because of the unstable conditions that exist in our current credit markets. Now, the short end of the portfolio, the 26%, is dominated by $80 million in the state fund, the local agency investment fund. We've got $16 million at the end of the quarter in banker's acceptances, $14 million in negotiable certificates of deposit, $5 million in commercial paper, and a smidge in four or five money market funds. There are no concerns at this end of the portfolio. In summary, the city portfolio is safe, sound, and very liquid. In normal times, this portfolio would take minimal maintenance, but with the financial landscape as fractured and as fragile as it is right now, even a portfolio as sound as ours needs additional vigilance, and we will continue to do that. Gentlemen, this was to be a good news report in a very difficult time. That concludes my remarks.
All right. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Baruchy. Don't go away, I'm sure there are some questions. Let me start with the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of supplemental comments. One is that, again, as Ron pointed out, we tend to think of the portfolio going down as being a bad thing. Actually, as you might have noted if you watched the state's activities at the beginning of the fiscal year, at the beginning of a fiscal year, your cash generally goes down because your revenues do not flow in evenly throughout the year. A good example is property taxes come to you in two payments, in December, and then again in, in June, and so for the first six months, generally in cities, your cash flow in is not equivalent to your expenses. In some agencies, like the state, because they don't have a ready cash supply, they have to go out and borrow, so have to incur a great deal of interest expense to support their operations for the first six months of the year. Here in Glendale, because we have a very comfortable portfolio, we rely on that, and as a result, have those savings. Secondly, Ron noted the $22 million advance payment on PERS. We received a discount from PERS in order to do that, because they have our money to use throughout the year, and that discount exceeded the value that we would have made had we kept that money in the bank and paid them on a monthly basis. The premium or the discount we received was about $840,000, and so before we did that, we looked to make sure that we were actually going to make money by doing that, and indeed we did. That made cost-effective sense, because had we kept it, we would have earned about 3.5%. By prepaying it with PERS, you get about a 7.5% rate on your money. Just wanted to note those two items.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Yusakian, you have your hand up.
Yes. Ron, as you know, we've been paying extra attention lately to all the financial networks. While this is a very good portfolio that you're keeping, there's one question that there was a lot of hearings in the House and the Senate and the Banking Committee, dealing with all the rating companies.
Yes.
The S&amp;P, and I see most of our ratings are AAA, AAA+, we've got a couple of AA's. How, how sure are we that S&amp;P's ratings were actually legitimate? Do you feel comfortable that this rating still hold, or, because some of them were just rating things willy-nilly?
Yeah, the rating agencies got into a lot of trouble with the municipal bond insurers. A lot of complaints that they gave them a free pass. I was up in Sacramento a couple of weeks ago, listening to State Treasurer, and of course, he's got the campaign against the rating agencies. Public agencies should be rated differently than Lehman Brothers. The state of California bonds are rated Single A, for example, as he would state, and Lehman Brothers was a Single A-rated paper at the same time. Here we are, a couple of months later, the state of California is still around, where's Lehman Brothers? That's his argument. There's probably a lot of truth in that, it isn't the only thing that we look at, however, it is in the policy, we do look at, at ratings. I should tell you one of the, what we've done here in developing our policy with regard to commercial notes, the government code allows municipalities to have 30% of their holdings in commercial paper, and they can buy rated paper, rated paper by agency, by Moody's, by the firms, the rating agencies, of A, A-rated. When we turned around and put ours together, we decided that we're not exactly comfortable with that, we don't want to have perhaps 30% of our portfolio in commercial paper, so we cut that down in half, the 15% is where we capped it at, and we said, "You know what? I'm not exactly sure," I was coming from the position similar to where you're coming from, "I'm not exactly sure what A means, because it's one grade above the lowest investable grade paper. If we made it, gave us some comfort, let's try with a AAA and a AA and see if in fact we could fill up our portfolio with, with good household names." Council approved that, we've been working with that, we, our policy prevents us from buying a Lehman Brothers, they were rated an A, we are looking only, as you have referenced, everything we have is either AAA or AA. We are looking only, as you have referenced, everything we have is either AAA or AA. We think, I feel, that there is a difference there. I think I should tell you that ever since the municipal bond insurer issue came up and the rating agencies were put under the microscope and were beat up in front of Congress, the recent reaffirmations, I think, are better written and better researched. So therefore, for example, we just received in the last six weeks, updates for GE and for Credit Suisse, and they've reaffirmed. And so therefore, I really have a little more comfort in the ratings today.
And a follow-up to that question is, if some of these, like Union Bank, or some of the other ones that are AA's.
Right.
If the reaffirmation comes back that they have been changed to a Single A, I am assuming that you will take the opportunity to change it and move it to some others?
Our policy says, and thank you for bringing that up. Thanks for that mention. We have included in the policy that if the credit rating of a security falls below the A grade, it must be sold or removed from the city portfolio. So we have a trigger point there. And we basically stop at A.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Najarian.
Fascinating, Mr. Baruchy. I find your work fascinating.
More interesting than me.
And I say that with all candor.
Well, thank you very much.
Being a trained economist, if I wasn't such a happy councilman, I might consider running for your job. But I'm not going to go there.
Goodness.
No, 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 no. We have him.
You find this more fascinating than the yield curve?
But let me ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
Why is the local agency yield so low at 2.77, whereas our average, what do we have, 3.56?
Yes.
What's up with that? What are they, dunces over there, or they're extremely cautious, or what is the? I mean, that's a significant difference.
Yes. The, well, it's good times, bad times. They were benefiting from an inverted yield curve for a year and a half. We talked about that. What we have now is a normalized yield curve. They should be less than we because they fall shorter on the yield curve. They provide, they run the giant pool. They've got to stay extremely liquid. Here, I'm saying that we will keep enough money on the short end for cash flow purposes to cover us nine, 10, 11, or 12 months out. The state's pool is down to, shoot, what is the? I don't have it here. It runs probably four or five months right now. So on the yield curve, they're less than half a year. So therefore, they're extremely liquid. They're buying very short instruments. What's been happening in the last couple of months, the flight to safety, people have been, investors have been rushing to buy treasuries. They've just driven the price of treasuries right down. On 30-day treasury bills, for example, the rate is less than half a percent. On 60 days, it's like 1 percent. On one-year paper, it's 1.5 or something. It's just atrocious. Yes.
Ron, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Najarian, we might point out that a characteristic of the local agency investment fund is that the agencies who have made deposits there can generally get their funds back out within a 24-hour period.
Next day.
Yeah, next day. So literally, you could have agencies in and out with tens of millions of dollars at one time. So they have to keep their portfolio very liquid.
It's very short.
As a result, they're shorter term now.
That's right.
Mr. Baruchy, my next question is on our corporate.
Yes.
Corporate notes. I see that they do give us an attractive yield. Aren't we, aren't they at risk as well, especially?
Yes.
Some of the financials, the Bank of Americas, the Walmarts, the General Electrics, when we've seen some of the huge AIGs, for instance, almost without warning, dropped out from their AAA to BB, weren't they? They dropped quite a significant step. So is the risk?
You mean AIG?
AIG.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, but you're going back several years.
AIG recently was a AAA, was it not?
I don't think so. Not for several years.
Well, I think it was. I know the MTA has several issues.
I know that I used to buy, I used to buy AIG.
Okay. I think MTA has several with AIG in which they're, it was another branch of the AIG.
They've got International Leasing Corp. Anyhow.
My, I guess my, the crux of my question is, is the attractive yield, relatively attractive yield upwards of 5 percent, worth the risk with some of these corporate notes that we have? I see we've placed some, you know, B of A. I'm not sure when you placed it, but in general, are you comfortable with the corporate notes that we have in light of the return that we're getting?
Yes. Yes. I say that because we do track this. I mean, it isn't something that we bought a year ago or a year and a half ago, and then we forget about it. It's like General Electric Capital, for example. We look at their quarterly reports and the analyst's reports. And I follow these. Bank of America, I'm very familiar with Bank of America. Toyota Credit, I mean, there are only a handful of successful automobile companies left in the world. Toyota is one of them. Notice, we don't have GM paper. We don't have, we don't have Ford. US Bank, these are, again, the ratings are coming back, and we look at, I'm very interested in the most recent ratings. And I've looked at, I've quoted here the last six weeks. I've got General Electric in the other one. I feel very, very comfortable with these. Remember, the job here of the city treasurer is an investment manager. I deal with risk. The question that you're asking is something that we aren't just considering today. We looked at several years ago when we included, when we put in the inclusion of corporate notes into the portfolio. We studied it then as to what the parameters ought to be. We came back several years later and said, you know what? We probably need to have a trigger mechanism here. That would probably make a lot of sense. And I think some of you in council remember that. We haven't had a lot of corporates for a while. I mean, there was a time where we were not buying corporates. There just, there wasn't anything, AAA and AA's were not issuing paper. When we see, when we see names that I feel comfortable with, I will go out and I will buy them. I feel comfortable with these holdings. As I stayed here, in normal times, these, this is a portfolio with very little maintenance for the very reason that you're asking the question. We have to stay vigilant because they are corporate and because of the uncertainty of the times.
Councilmember Quintero.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Baruchy, I agree with you. I feel very comfortable with these corporate names. I don't think there's any issues with these companies. And if there is any issue, the federal government will step in and bail them out anyway.
Well.
Kind of lose any.
Mr. Quintero, that was not the case with those that were left holding Lehman Brothers.
Yeah, well, that was the only one, though, wasn't it?
Washington Mutual, too.
Pretty much bailed everybody else out, and they'll be bailing out General Motors and Ford.
Well, I don't know that Mr. Najarian would allow me to fall back on that.
Well, that's all right. I heard Mr. Najarian say just moments ago that he was extremely happy being a council member, so he may, he may not challenge you. But the night's not over, so. Mr. Weaver, did you have anything?
Oh.
Okay. Yes, sir.
One thing to answer to Mr. Najarian, when the Bank of America items were bought, they were bought on 9/23, 9/24, and 9/24 of 2008.
Yes, it's on page four of your report, by the way. If you wanted to look at the purchase date and the maturity date.
He asked the question when it was purchased.
Oh, I didn't answer that. I'm sorry.
That was a gutsy move, if you ask me, but right in the peak of the collapse of our banks.
You want to know what gutsy is? Going up to listen to the Lath people in Sacramento two weeks ago, and they were holding Countrywide paper, right to the end. Now, that's gutsy. Now, Bank of America, I mean, has bought Countrywide, and Bank of America has bought Merrill Lynch. Somehow, deep down inside, I think, I think they're going to be a survivor.
We hope, we hope so.
Well, risk. Remember, risk is not exactly a dirty four-letter word.
Mr. Baruchy, let me ask you if you could remain. I will entertain a motion and note and file in a moment. However, we have one speaker.
Sure.
I'll move eight, eight, one.
Second.
All right. We do have a speaker, however. Mike Mohill. Mr. Kasakian, three minutes.
Mayor Draymond, councilman, I'd like to thank our treasurer for his report. He did bring up a couple of things that concerned me. He mentioned General Motors and Ford, and also Chrysler, who are no longer here today. Why do you think that? It's because of the, you know, U-Y-I-O-N-S, the unions bankrupt them. Same thing with all the newspapers that we used to have in the past, back in the '60s. The unions kept wanting more and more, and the publisher had to keep giving and giving, raising the cost of doing business. And papers, not buying papers, they went other places, and advertising became too expensive. Now we have this situation in the city of Glendale. The treasurer hasn't mentioned anything about what have we set aside to pay for the shortfall on the commitment on the pensions? What is our projection, Mr. Treasurer? How much are we going to be paying out to support Calpers? Could you tell the city councilman that? I would like to know. So will the city, the residents know how much it's going to cost us more money to pay for our employees? Don't get me wrong, these are good employees. But you know, there's a lot of good employees today that only have Social Security, including myself. In fact, over 70 percent of this country lives on Social Security and not on Calpers. So I'd like to know from the treasurer, how much money have we set aside to take care of our city pensions? And are we going to continue doing this in the future? Because I'm concerned because I'm paying a lot of taxes, and so is everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Would you like to respond very, very, very briefly, Mr. Baruchy? And aside from the point that you're not the finance director of the city.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I, that really is a question for the finance director to respond to, or perhaps someone else would want to pick it up. In any event, on the investment side, I simply work with the investments, and I work with the city portfolio. He's talking about setting aside funds for budgetary purposes and the fund accounting side, which is taking care of downstairs and finance.
Okay. We will assume some of that is rhetorical anyway, and when next the finance director is here, we can tackle that again. Mr. Quintero.
I just wanted, not for you, Mr. Baruchy, I just wanted to make a brief comment about the unions. So it turns out that the unions have driven newspapers out of business. Now, the internet didn't do it, computers didn't do it, television news didn't do it, it was the unions. Then in terms of the auto industry, I think you need to start with maybe the Corvair. You remember that wonderful piece of engineering? And look at some of the executive decisions that the big three made before you go and attack the unions. They just put cars together and trucks together. It's the execs that make the decisions that brought the American auto industry to where it is today.
The Pinto, the Vega.
And the Pinto, excuse me, from the Ford side. The Pinto and the Vega, both.
And the Gremlin and the Pacer. All right, well.
The Gremlin from America, going to be here all night, actually.
All right. Okay, Mr. Baruchy, I thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to, this is a note and file. So, Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Ron, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Baruchy. Okay. Let us go to the next item. Mr. Kasakian.
At A-B is Director of Information Services regarding replacement of air conditioning system at the Mount Tom Public Safety Radio Communication Site, Spec. 3338. At B-1 is motion awarding bid and authorizing city manager to enter into contract with Air Plus Corporation. At B-2 is resolution appropriating $183,000.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Move eight, B-1 and 2. Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Yusefian.
Got a question. Somebody needs to tell me, first of all, how big is that room that it requires a $183,000 air conditioning system?
Here comes your answer.
There comes my man, right there.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Yusefian. It's actually multiple rooms.
Actually, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Steve Ronik, I'm wireless administrator for the city. It's actually multiple rooms and redundant air conditioning in each room because the critical system's up there. So it's actually six or eight air conditioners.
And, and how old are the existing ones?
They were installed, I believe, in 1991.
Okay. And they're on their last leg? We can't make them last?
Yeah, it has failed repeatedly over the last few years, and the system in there is undersized for the amount of heat we're generating with all the new equipment that's up there. So it's critical that we get it replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No comments, no speaker cards either. So let's call the roll.
Councilmember Paul.
We have a motion.
Motion and a second by Weaver and Councilmember Quintero. Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Could we hear the next item, please?
At C is Director of Information Services regarding replacement of emergency generator at the Mount Tom Public Safety Radio Communication Site, Spec. 3339. C-1 is motion awarding bid and authorizing city manager to enter into contract with Electro Construction Corporation. C-2 is resolution appropriating $138,000 and $138,361.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kasakian and Mr. Weaver.
Just like move eight, C-1 and 2.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have questions? Yes, Mr. Yusefian.
Sorry to do this, but I have a question on this thing. You're placing the generator on this one. Is the generator in a shape that we could reuse it somewhere else?
We think it possibly could be. And as part of the bid spec, it was incumbent upon the contractor to deliver it to Public Works so they could evaluate it and see if they could reuse it.
So they're going to pull it out, are they going to pull out the tank also?
Yes.
So they're going to put a new tank in there and then do?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian.
I'm trying to figure out ways to say my.
I see that. Waste not, want not. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Now, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Kasakian, let's call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian, Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Could we hear the item, please, at 8-D and D-1?
At 8-D, it's city attorney regarding extensions of discretionary land use entitlements and building plan checks and discussion of inclusion housing in Lufthes. At D-1 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Let me go first to the city attorney.
Okay.
Mr. Garcia, would you like to run this, if you wouldn't mind?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this report is an item with respect to the city's discretionary land use entitlements, the plan checks, the building plan checks, and a discussion of the inclusion of housing fee. This discussion arose, came about as an issue of the status of the economy and the status of the financial markets, whether there was a need to extend certain entitlements and plan checks, given the fact that there's extreme difficulty obtaining financing for projects to get their financing and pull permits. So the report contains really three discrete items. One is with respect to the issue of extending discretionary land use entitlements, condition use permits, variances, parking use permits, parking reduction permits, parking exceptions, and designer view. Currently, those entitlements expire two years after they're approved. Those... Those, uh, um, the state legislature recently adopted, I shouldn't say recently, it's been a few months now, back in, in July, adopted legislation to extend subdivision maps, uh, for any, any map that hadn't expired before July fifteenth, to basically extend those subdivision maps for an additional year. So what is in the report is proposal, and obviously this is just, this is a, a recommendation from staff on the entitlements. There is obviously the latitude of the council to give, uh, an extension for a longer period if that's what the council desires, uh, to extend those land use entitlements by an additional year. So if the council direction is to, uh, extend them, we would bring back an ordinance to extend all those entitlements from two years to three years. Uh, the, the second item, uh, on this report is the issue of, of building plan checks. If you recall, last month, we had a report for you and an ordinance, uh, to extend plan checks, uh, that were submitted to the city before December thirty-one, two thousand seven. Uh, extend them, uh, till the end of this year so that the council could take up this item of whether or not to extend them for a, a longer period. Uh, the issue with those plan checks is that any plan check that was submitted after two thousand, after January one, two thousand eight, is required to comply with the two thousand eight Glendale Building Code, uh, which is an adoption of the International Building Code. Uh, plan checks that were submitted prior to that were not required to submit to that code and so any extension, uh, beyond two thousand eight essentially requires a legislative action on, on the part of the council, uh, to extend those beyond, uh, January, uh, December thirty-one, two thousand eight. The report, uh, contains information about, uh, the differences, uh, between the, uh, IBC and the UBC, which was the former basis for the Glendale Building Code. As explained in the report, it's, it's difficult to quantify those differences because it's really a wholesale change from the way that these projects are, are designed. Um, so what's listed in the report is, is the recommendation of your building official, uh, and your staff not to extend those plan checks because, um, those plan checks, those plan checks will be the only plan checks that will not be, starting in two thousand nine, that would not be required to comply with the new code. Obviously, the council does have the discretion to extend those, those, uh, longer. Um, Glendale is a twelve-month, uh, plan check jurisdiction, meaning those plan checks during the last twelve months, one option for the council would be to extend those plan checks for an eighteen-month period. Um, essentially what that would do is extend, the longest the plan check would be extended on that scenario would, would be till the middle of two thousand nine. Uh, and again, the council has an option to extend it for a longer period that it deems fit or it deems necessary, uh, to allow those, those particular projects to ride out, uh, the particular downturn in the economy. Um, other options that were listed in the report are for the council to require those, those pre-two thousand eight plan checks to comply with the new code, submit under the new code, uh, but be required, but would be either exempt or discounted from their, their new plan check fees because they would have to pay a new plan check fee. So that is another option that's listed in the report as well. Uh, the third item, uh, that's in the report has to do with the discussion of the inclusionary housing fee and that's kind of how we actually got started, bringing, bringing this report forward in the first place. We had a discussion in August, uh, had two council meetings, two joint meetings, actually, regarding the in-lu fee, uh, and the council had a discussion whether it wanted to provide an incentive for ownership housing. Uh, the discussion focused on the option which became known as Option Eight in that discussion, which was to allow a, a rebate for those, for the, the in-lu fee, uh, for those developers that would, uh, build the units and sell them, uh, within a certain time, uh, or would, would sell them in, in the event that the market showed, as an analysis showed, that the market couldn't sustain the sale of the units with the payment of the fee. I, uh, the issue was, uh, delayed at that point. We, we addressed one particular project at that point, but the, the issue was, was brought back for the purpose of the council being able to discuss whether or not it wanted to incentivize those projects and if it did, uh, what would be the method? Would it be a rebate or would it be just deferring that in-lu fee from the time of the building permit to later times, such as, for example, the certificate of occupancy, uh, or some other option that the council desires? So, those are the, the main issues that, uh, are the subject of this report and I would add that on the in-lu fee, um, to the extent that the council desires to extend those particular plan checks, the, the in-lu fee itself may be a lesser of an issue and that can, can sort of wait out the, the plan checks, uh, when those, those plan checks are extended.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia, for, uh, updating and summarizing where we are with this. Um, I want to go to my, we have some speakers, I want to go to my colleagues, but also want to make a comment, uh, before we do that. Um, there's been a, a number of discussions on this topic, uh, both in the afternoon session and evening, now, or evening session. Um, and part of this has centered around the balance between, um, uh, and, and industry in our city, if we want to call development an industry or development slash investment as an industry, certainly, uh, an integral part of our local economy and how it relates to the economy of the city as a whole beyond the interests of just those who are doing the development. In other words, there are employment issues, people's capacity to earn and so on and so forth, not to mention the, the in-lu fees that were mentioned and the, uh, uh, how it really, how some of the fees relate to parks and libraries, et cetera, et cetera, which I'm sure my various colleagues will address, but also, there is just a simple balance between the public safety, uh, implications of the code, the two different, um, the Uniform Building Code versus the International Building Code and, uh, and the balance between those public safety implications and the, uh, the prospects of helping a particular, uh, uh, investment community within our city. Uh, part of that has, has seemed to take on a life of its own that has escalated into some, um, uh, what appears to be verbal conflict or philosophical conflict between myself and Councilmember Najarian and I wanted to address it because it was covered in, in the newspaper. Uh, I just want to go on the record for saying I don't, uh, question Councilmember Najarian's, uh, uh, interest in attempts to, or the manner in which he's asking questions relating to that balance of public safety versus, versus economic interests. They are both, uh, valid discussion points and they are both extremely important to this city. Um, so I, uh, I have no problem with that whatsoever. I simply want to make it clear that, uh, that, uh, we need to look at both issues and we need to have that debate, uh, come to a conclusion. Um, and, uh, if there's the implication being drawn by anyone that, uh, that I am somehow on being unduly critical of Councilmember Najarian, uh, or misinterpreting or mischaracterizing his intentions, I want to remove that right now. That is not my intention. Um, having said that, let's get to the debate. Um, let me start on this side of the dais this time.
I'd like to hear from the speakers.
And we will do that, but I'm going to still give all my colleagues an opportunity to speak if they so choose, before we hear the speakers, because that's what we always do. Okay?
Uh, I, I prefer the speakers.
Okay. Mr. Yusefian?
Uh, I'll, I'll tell you, uh, I think, Mr. Mayor, what you actually said, uh, I look at this thing holistically, it's not just about the developer. I think it also has to do with, uh, what happens to this community at large. Um, we may lose five million dollars in permit fees this year. That's understandable because almost every project that we approved in the past, it's dead on arrival. Part of the reason is not that builders don't want to build, they just can't get a loan. Just talked to a developer who was building a house, his own house, was trying to get, was trying to get a loan for four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It took him several months to do that and back and forth and they just didn't want to give it to him. He had score over seven hundred and fifty and he had put thirty percent down, still wouldn't do it. He had a track record. So when you're talking about a hundred, hundred and twenty million dollar building, high-rise, nobody's willing to write you the loan. Now, in this city, as these, some of these large buildings that we have approved gets built, they increase the tax revenue that we collect to provide for some of the services. When that building is not there, those tax revenues are not there. They also generate a one-time increase to the school board and also to the, uh, plan check fee, which we use for that year as part of our budget. That won't be there. If we go so far as to say no to any of these extensions, basically what will happen is things will expire, no one is going to go out there and build anything, everybody will just wait until the economy rapidly changes, which means you're going to have to wait five years. Five years before condos are selling at six, seven hundred thousand dollars that people are willing to buy. That will take that long, which means if I was a developer, there's no way I'm going to risk that. I'll just wait. I'll wait for five years. So forget making all that money from all of those buildings. No more taxes and as you don't get any taxes on those large buildings, this council decided to take a big chunk of that money and put it toward parks. The development agency will be over in eight years. Guess what? All that money that we were planning on giving it to the parks, you can kiss that goodbye too, because there's no building, there's no taxes. There's no taxes, you can't transfer it to parks. In my opinion, the state did the right thing. They extended it for one year, buying the state time to see what will happen, because the state is in the same type of a creature as we are, to an extent. They depend on growth to pay for services, because people don't work for the same price. Everybody wants a raise and you got to pay that and that costs money. In my opinion, we should, as the staff has recommended, we should, we should give one more year, add on to the two-year we have to three-year, which staff recommended. I think one-year extension to redevelopment agency should also be done, but I guess that needs to come in front of redevelopment agency. And I think the, on the, how, on the building and safety, I think we should do the eighteen months, which is recommend, uh, maximum. Now, I understand Stuart Tom doesn't want that, uh, he recommends against it, but I will say these are different times. This is not what two years ago was, five years ago was, this is one in a hundred years type of a thing. Look at what the state and the federal government's going through. Uh, so I don't consider this a bailout, I'm just taking this as a timeout. This is just a timeout for everyone to just kind of sit back and see what happens to the economy. Now, if we buy this time for the developers for about a year, there will be an incentive for some of them, not all of them, for some of them to move forward and build some of those buildings. So there'll be some income coming in probably three years from now. It takes at least two years to build some of those. We don't do that, they'll just let it expire and say, okay, fine, see you in five years and you lose that stream of revenue that you were counting on getting it earlier. And there's no cost to us, by the way. Zero cost to us, uh, to just extending it. And there's awful lot of these. It's got one page and I was just told today, there's another one.
Um, did I hear my colleague correctly? I stepped out for a moment, came back into the room in time to hear you giving the development community a timeout. Is that what I?
No, I said-
Okay.
Extension in here is like a timeout.
I know, I heard-
You know, we're just waiting to see the, the, the economy catching up.
All right. Councilmember Najarian?
Uh, right, I'd rather hear it.
All right, now let's get to our, uh, speakers. Uh, our first speaker is Nick Lam, followed by Rodney Khan.
My name is Nick Lam. I'm at eight hundred South Brand Boulevard in Glendale. If I may, I'd like to pass this, uh, summary. In the interest of not taking a lot of time, I'm kind of summarize my position in that one-page letter and I just want to make a brief comment. This is difficult time in the city of Glendale for business. I have been in the city of Glendale doing business for almost twenty-eight years and this is the most difficult time we have seen, both in the car business and in the development business. And I, to remind, I appear before the city council respectfully request the city council to extend the plan check, extension for one year. We have a thirty-four unit project right across from the, from the Americana, even though the plan check is completed, ready to be pulled, but right now realistically, I don't see the bank is going to give me a loan to build, give me the loan to do the construction and if I get the loan and do the construction, I don't see the demand for the project. So I can really, I cannot really start the project at this time, even though the permit is ready to be pulled. But if I do not pull the permit, then I would risk having, having to conform with the new building code and according to my architect, it means I can lose maybe up to eight to ten unit in my project, my thirty-four unit may become twenty-two, twenty-four unit and all the whole entire project has to be redesigned, has, engineering has to be redesigned, architectural has to be redesigned and the total cost could be talking about like millions of dollars and I just cannot afford to have that happen. And if I have to pull the permit, I need to pay maybe three to four hundred thousand for the permit fee and nowadays at this difficult time, three, four hundred thousand is a lot of money to us. So I respectfully request the city council to, to really help the business in Glendale. Now is a very difficult time and I urge the city council to do what you can to help us so we can survive this difficult time together. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lam. Yes. Well, if you're going to go to questions, let's get through the speakers, but they're not going to leave, trust me, so you all get to ask your questions.
Oh, the car business is, uh, just like any other business, you know, is taking a beating.
How much is down?
And I would say probably twenty to thirty percent.
Thank you.
And in order to survive, we just have to kind of cut overhead, you know, and it's difficult and it's a very hard, difficult time and, uh, but we have to work twice as hard to, to pay the rent and keep the business going.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lam. Uh, Rodney Khan, followed by Drew Colquitt.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, city council members and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan and my offices are located here in the city of Glendale. A few items have been touched on, so I won't repeat, but this city council and this city has approved a number of very good projects over the last few years and due to the financing for construction, the credit markets, the housing market, many of those projects have just disappeared and those projects will not come back. Those are lost opportunities that is outside of the city's control. There is nothing that you guys could do about that, that's just the market. Tonight, there is something that you can do about. This is within your control of what's being presented to you. There's a mention that the mayor made about these projects and what they do, Mr. Yusefian did as well. The opportunities for work, for jobs, uh, during this very difficult time, for the millions of dollars, and it's not a few dollars these projects generate, it's millions of dollars over the course of a number of years. That's what funds the parks, that's what funds the affordable housing. The blighted areas, uh, projects are both in redevelopment project areas, they're also outside of redevelopment project areas and they run the gamut. They're small projects, whether they're a few units, multifamily housing, up to two hundred plus units for mixed-use projects. All of these projects are impacted by the construction financing and also waiting to see what you do here this evening. They're either going to move forward, they're going to substantially redesign their project at significant costs, or they too, these remaining projects, are going to go away. The redesign of the project to meet the new code is a significant cost. It is not a small cost. For smaller projects, the cost obviously is lesser. For projects of a more significant magnitude, it's in the millions of dollars. It's not a few dollars, it's significant to redesign the engineering, to redesign the architectural. All of the things that, uh, Mr. Lam mentioned with his projects hold true on projects two hundred units and two units. It's all the same. There's talk of extension of the entitlements. Uh, I think that that's very good. Anything we can do at this time to try to help should be encouraged. I think that in terms of the extensions, I think there has to be a little bit of coordination. If a project's in plan check and- If a project's in plan check and that's being extended, we need to make sure that the entitlements that were granted don't expire while they're still going through plan check. And I'll conclude, because I really don't have a bunch of time and I have a lot to say. This market, as we know and as we heard from the city treasurer, is fragile, volatile, and unstable. Anything that the city council can do to help us would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Khan. Drew Colquitt?
Uh, my name is Drew Colquitt. My address is twenty forty Main Street, Suite 235 Irvine, California. And I'm the managing director of Alliance Residential Company. We're the developer of the proposed Isis Glendale mixed-use redevelopment, which has recently been approved for construction at five twenty-four West Colorado Street. As proposed and very recently approved, this redevelopment would add two-hundred market-rate residential units, as well as several thousand square feet of pedestrian-oriented retail at the west end of the San Fernando Road redevelopment area. We have worked diligently with city staff on this roughly seventy million dollar project uh, over the last two and a half years to attain our approvals. Our proposed development was not controversial, and it received unanimous approval at five separate, uh, five separate public hearings, um, during this process. The proposed development, generally agreed, uh, will be a catalyst, uh, to our neighborhood. Um, today, we have invested over twenty million dollars in the proposed development. We have purchased the land and have fully designed the project. Uh, I'm here today, I've spoken with you several times in the past, but I'm here today to give kind of a real-world update as what we've been going through. Um, sixty days ago, I was here to give an update, and at that time, I confirmed we had all of our equity in place, approximately thirty million, uh, as well as half of our debt syndication, twenty-one million. Uh, we were negotiating for the final tranche of debt for our project. Um, I believe we had a very good chance of starting construction by November, and, uh, we've had constant communications with city staff, uh, in regards to this and our project. Over the last forty-five days, our world's been turned upside down. As you know, capital markets, even for well-conceived projects, are now frozen. Um, there are two things that would really help us. An extension through two thousand nine of our building permit, so that we don't have to redesign it under the new code. This would help us in several ways. Um, it would cost us five hundred thousand dollars in redundant design costs to redesign it under the new code, number one. Number two, that process would take us at least three to four months before we even get back in for review by city staff. And this is one of the faster, more diligent cities, but that still takes three to four months of review from that point. So we're talking about an eight, eight-to-ten-month process of redesign if we started today under the new code. In addition to that, we would spend, uh, well over half a million dollars in land carry costs. And lastly, what we are understanding from our review of the new code, there could be a loss in, in, uh, rentable revenue creating area in the building, which would make the project potentially less attractive to our banks, uh, who are going to for loans during this period of time. Um, today, ninety-nine percent of the construction lenders are on the sidelines. We don't expect that to be that way forever, but we do expect that for the next several months. For a project of our size, we need a minimum of two lenders. Um, very few lenders, uh, want to do construction loans on seventy million dollar plus projects without, without a partner. Uh, finally, any relief, uh, or help in regards to the size of our impact fees? Uh, we are paying a three million dollar plus in lieu fee, and we have another two to two and a half million dollars in other impact fees that we would have to pay at the point that we pull our permits. Um, I sincerely appreciate your patience, hearing me out. Once again, I've been here several times, uh, and once again, sincerely appreciate all the efforts, uh, from council and city staff working with us over the last several years on this project.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Colquitt. Let me start again with Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to hear our building official, some questions.
That would be Stuart Tom, and he is on his way to the podium.
If he can respond to what he's heard from his perspective.
Mr. Tom.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Stuart Tom, building official for the city. Um, I, I think that what we heard, uh, from, uh, the individuals that are most directly affected is, um, uh, exactly what we did need to hear in order to, uh, bring to light some of the reasons that, um, you're, quite frankly, you're contemplating what you are. Um, I'm here as merely as a technical expert to address any questions that you might have. As the city's building official, I have an obligation to, um, protect the citizens, but uh, you as the policymakers have, um, a much broader, um, level of responsibility, because there are other things other than the building code that do affect the city. Um, and as they say, two heads are better one than one. Five heads are certainly, uh, better than one. Uh, in, in weighing this, um, I think that the best thing that can, um, that I can do to remind everybody is that the action that's before you really affects, um, a relatively small group of projects. Um, I think that if the action that was before you were to affect all future projects, um, I would, uh, be much more vocal in my position. Uh, but because it does affect a small number of projects, um, the ability to balance what is best for this community is something that might be a little bit easier to put your arms around. Um, but to address, as I was asked, what I just heard, I, I think that there's a tremendous amount of validity to what you just heard, and, um, that's why this issue has come forward. Um, I think that, uh, in the report that Mr. Garcia provided, uh, it was mentioned that if there was an extension, uh, one of the things that was looked at was an eighteen-month extension. I know that, uh, the members that have stepped forward, or, or the speakers that have stepped forward have asked for a year. Um, the eighteen months would match what, to my knowledge, is the longest plan check period of any municipality in this state, uh, which is what was adopted by the city of Los Angeles, and that is an eighteen-month plan check period. And I certainly think that that would be a starting point for discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tom.
I'll follow on. The examples you gave of between the UBC and the IBC, notice they have, the major ones seem to be related to fire issues. At least the examples you gave. Oral protection, three-hour rather than two-hour, et cetera. Is that, would you say within the writing up, you go back to redesign and stuff, are we mainly talking in the area of fire suppression? Or is you just happen to pull these ones out to give that impression?
I think that, for the most part, the significant changes in the code are related to, uh, fire safety.
And so, in the, I guess we can debate, in this city, how many structural fires we've had, especially in big units or new construction?
Oh, no.
And the risk involved, if we move ahead and extend, possibly allow buildings to go under the current, under the old code and not be up? How much risk are we taking?
That is certainly something that can be considered, and if I can add something that might help you in that consideration, Glendale is a mandatory sprinkler community. So whereas the IBC-based state building code does not necessarily mandate that all structures be equipped with an automatic fire suppression system, our city does require that. So if, if you're looking for some features within our city which might help to mitigate, um, some of your, your, um, considerations here, the sprinklers themselves do add an extra level of protection.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero.
I'm prepared to support the staff report, follow the state guidelines, and, um, let's hope it works. I'm not entirely sure that it will, but at least we're giving it a chance. We're giving the business community the opportunity to, uh, to respond, so we'll see. But for sure, the loss would be, uh, the monies that we'll be taking from these projects, especially in the redevelopment area, and applying them towards, uh, parks and libraries. So anyway, I support the staff.
Councilmember Najarian.
Thanks. Um, first, I'd like to, uh, make a disclaimer to my colleagues, and I don't want, uh, don't want them to misconstrue any of my argument and my discussion as being any sort of personal attack, uh, impugning any of your, uh, any of your interests in maintaining Glendale as, uh, one of the premier cities of California. But, um, I guess part of my training, uh, as an attorney, uh, leads me to this sort of adversarial role that sometimes we, uh, we engage in. Um, that being said, Mr. Garcia, my first problem is, as Mr. Tom indicated, that there are relatively few number of projects that are affected by this. When we sat down and discussed our campaign contribution issues, along with the ethics, we said that someone with a project that comes before council, uh, should a person come before council that has a project that has either given to a council member, uh, within that period of time, uh, would create a conflict for the council to, uh, conflict of interest, which, with, for which they would have to recuse themselves. So why isn't that the problem now? Uh, I have asked for a list of all the projects that, uh, would be affected by this. I have a, a short list, there's several here. Um, uh, and one of them is Dr. Kay's project, and I had a problem dealing with his, uh, in lieu, uh, issue several months ago. So is what you're telling me that today, uh, not today, what time is it now? Almost eight o'clock? At ten o'clock this morning, all the developers who had an issue and would be affected by a extension of the, uh, plan check period could have come into each and every one of our offices and deposited a campaign check, and this afternoon, right now, at quarter to eight, we could sit here and vote on that to extend it, and there'd be no issue with any of our campaign issues and campaign regulations that we tried to discuss and tried to deal with a month or so ago.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, not saying that that happened, but assuming that it had.
Of course. This is a hypothetical.
Yeah, hypothetically. The action before you, what's being considered is to direct staff to bring back what is in essence a legislative action. It's a, it's an action that applies to a class of projects, not to individual projects, um, or not to an individual project or a discrete number of individual projects. In fact, the list that's provided for you, it's not exhaustive, um, as, as I think we explained, uh, in the report, or, uh, we've explained, is that it's difficult, it's difficult to ascertain the exact number of projects that this applies to. It's so, the campaign contribution ordinance applies to the situation where you have a particular application, uh, for development that is before you, um, and that's not the case, uh, with respect to this action. I understand that it does apply to limited number, but again, it is a, it is by definition a legislative action as opposed to the quasi judicial actions that we're referring to.
Okay. I understand your answer.
Okay.
But I think, and this may be a tangent, but I think that's completely wrong. And I think we, as a council, have to close that loophole, because it is a loophole between, uh, creating a legislative, uh, action and discretionary review on a project. Number one. Because I see a lot of my friends out there, a lot of people that have been very generous to me, have, uh, uh, Mr. Lam and Pacific B&amp;W and David Ho have golden hearts. They're very generous, both to my campaign, both to inviting me to events for their charities, and, and personally, I feel a conflict. I mean, my heart sunk when I saw Mr. Lam walk in the door, and I learned that he has one of these projects. Uh, and I think that's wrong. I mean, I feel a conflict personally. I feel a big conflict. Um, that's not the issue before us today, but I think that's something, if we're serious about cleaning this up, uh, cleaning up ethics in the city, that's something we're gonna have to address. Moving on, um, I, I'd like to give some good news, perhaps, on my position. I don't have any problem in extending, uh, for an additional year, the discretionary land use entitlements, from two to three years. Uh, my, my problem, um, comes back to understanding the IBC versus the UBC, and trying to reconcile why, in any way, we're moving away from the added understanding that it's an incremental increase in safety. But our entire society is based on incremental advancements, and why we're going back. The IBC, as I understand, uh, was the result compiled as a result of four, uh, building councils, three building councils coming together, uh, with an attempt to create a model code for building, and it is recognized in most of the United States jurisdictions. And when I look back to the, the main, uh, the main differences in the IBC versus the UBC, um, we're talking about, Mr. Weaver mentioned, that, uh, there is a, a difference in the fire-resistant rating for walls, for firewalls, uh, of single-family dwellings, which provides a higher level of protection from the spread of fire. The second one is involving windows. It's a higher level of windows with an increased level of fire protection. Uh, it moves on to commercial buildings, uh, and the point is that the IBC provides the highest degree of protection from the spread of fire between adjacent buildings, and increases the likelihood that a significant commercial fire is contained. It moves on and deals with townhouses and condos. Many of these projects are townhouses, condos, uh, regarding the fire-resistant construction of the walls, providing twice the level of protection. Something that concerns me are the, uh, homes that are in the Wilder, in the wildland urban interface area. Much of Glendale is in that area. The whole Lacrisena area, our hillsides, Chevy Chase, you pick a canyon, you're probably a stone's throw away from a wildland inner, urban interface area. And what the IBC does is it's giving you higher level of protection by a more stringent type of material that is more fire-resistant. It goes on to emergency egress, uh, that there are more than one path, additional paths of exit from a building. It goes on to dealing with safety for wheelchair-bound individuals. Um, these are, and this is just the fire. Uh, I haven't even gone into this, any seismic issues, whether there's any significant seismic, uh, seismic differences between these. So these are the things that, I mean, this is the other side of the story. I mean, you've got the developers who are ready to invest in the city and bring income and provide jobs and homes, but on the other hand, you have the fire safety. And when you say that we've heard from the people most affected by, by this, I disagree with you. I think the people that are most effective, most affected are not here today. They are the future residents of these homes, of these apartments, the future workers in these commercial buildings, and they're not here today. That's the other side of the issue. Um, what I would be, what I would be, uh, well, let me ask you this. Can we, can we just go back to the UBC? Do we have any discretion in, as a legislative action, to ditch this IBC and go to the UBC?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we can't do that. Um, the state, pursuant to the Health and Safety Code of California, the state adopts a, a model code, and that is the two thousand and seven California Building Code. Um, by statute, every jurisdiction, including Glendale, is mandated to either adopt and utilize that code or a locally amended version wherein the amendments, um, are deemed necessary to better protect the community based on either a local, geologic, topographic, or climatic condition. Short of that, we cannot amend the code, and we cannot go back to a prior code.
So is there a limit to how far we can extend the jurisdiction of the two thousand and seven UBC?
Let me, let me clarify, the, the, um, what is before us today is actually not extending a code. What you are considering is a legislative action, which is not considered a building standard per se under the law, it's an administrative standard, and this council has the ability to establish whatever, uh, plan check duration you see fit for this community. And so that's why, if you were to choose, in fact, that's what this council did, uh, earlier this year, when the plan check duration was extended from one hundred eighty days to one year. And what is potentially being considered right now is an extension of the plan check duration for, as Mr. Garcia pointed out, a, a select class of projects, only those projects which were submitted prior to December, I'm sorry, prior- which were submitted prior to December, I'm sorry, prior to January 1st of 2008. So what you would be doing is extending the plan check, and therefore, in an indirect fashion, for those particular projects, they would be entitled to observe the previous code.
Is there any way that we can, we can require the adoption of at least these safety measures in the plans that have been submitted under the 2007 California Building Code? The fire, the fire, the wall ratings, the windows, safety is my concern. I understand the financial crisis is upon us, and whether that's going to be resolved in six months, I mean, if you ask me, we should have asked Mr. Baruchy probably while he was here, I don't think we're going to come close to being resolved, and I don't think we're going to have loans available to any of these guys anyway at the end of six months or 18 months from January 1st, 2008. Is there any way, but my question is, is there any practical way to implement the critical fire safety requirements, whether it's the material for the single-family homes or the firewall ratings, the window ratings for the projects that are in this gray area?
Not that I am aware of. As an administrative action to extend the duration of plan check, your action is limited solely to that. To impose building standards upon a project would require a modification of the building code, and I don't know of a way that you can do that selectively for individual projects. Perhaps Mr. Garcia knows something that I don't know.
I tend to agree with Mr. Tom. I think it'd be difficult, both procedurally and practically, because again, as is pointed out, that one, the list that is attached to the report is not an exhaustive list, and two, I think that if you put these particular requirements on any extension, it becomes problematic as to whether it impacts the design of these projects in any other way.
Okay. Thank you.
Before we go to you, Mr. Yusefian, Mr. Quintero.
We have, we have a set amount of projects here that would fall under this ordinance, or whatever it's going to be. Any hillside home that's going through the process is going to have to comply with the IBC regs, correct? Any new ones going forward?
I knew if you're referring to projects that were submitted for plan check on or after January 1st, yes, that is correct.
Right. So all of the new construction is going to fall under the IBC.
That's correct.
So there's obviously a very limited amount of structures that are going to fall under the UBC.
That is correct.
Right. And then I also want to comment that last week, the city council, I didn't vote for it, approved a home, 6,500 square foot home up in the mountains, hanging right next to all of the potential hazards, and that's going to fall under the UBC, right?
Oh, IBC.
That's going to be an IBC design? Because it hasn't gone through plan check yet?
Hasn't even been designed.
It has not been submitted into building and safety for plan check, so once it is, it will be held to the IBC standard.
So generally speaking, how many homes do you think are going to be built in the hillsides under the old UBC code? Do you have some idea? I mean, is it five or six, or is it?
Unfortunately, and I apologize to this council, we contacted IS to see if they could query the database to determine that number, and their response to us was that the manner in which our current permit management system tracks data, which is one of the reasons we are changing over to the CSI system, but the manner in which the data is tracked in our current KIVA system does not lend itself to an accurate search. So unfortunately, I have no way of knowing.
Maybe planning, maybe planning has a feel for it. Do you think there's going to be 10, 12, 5, 3? Any idea how many, just single-family homes in hillsides?
I'm sure there's more than five or three which have entitlements. How many of them succeed in getting financing and are actually built is, I do not know.
And then another question I have is, can we exclude single-family homes and only go for multi?
No, yeah, because we're applying, as Mr. Tom explained, administrative standard to the building projects, not a class of zoning projects in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Tom, I'm going to ask you these questions. I think my colleagues are, I'm not taking offense, by the way, Mr. Najarian. I think he has a legitimate reason that he's worried. He thinks that buildings are going to be more prone to fire, but you did say something that I think maybe some of us didn't quite catch on. I built a house and got it approved under the 2007 UBC code in Glendale, or a building. If it's a brand-new house, does it require sprinklers?
Yes.
Yes. Under the IBC, I was in a different municipality that does not require mandatory sprinklers. Does the IBC require sprinkler for that brand-new house?
No.
No. So let me ask you another question, which in here you have put in, a two-hour wall and a one-hour wall. I have two houses side by side. One house has a two-hour wall, no sprinklers. One house has a one-hour wall with full sprinklers. They both catch on fire. Which one would you rather be inside? Don't tell me neither one, but which one will be the one that will be the safest? The one with the sprinkler or one without?
The one sprinkler. I would certainly prefer to be in the sprinkler building.
So I think that's what I'm trying to make the point. What you just said earlier, which kind of, you said it very quickly, but I caught on to that very quickly, which is that some of these changes that it's in the IBC, it's based on a project that does not have sprinklers on. They're trying to add on some more fire protection, especially on certain municipalities that are not required. We used to be the same way. I remember a while back, I think in the 80s, you build a new building, you were not required to have sprinklers. Now we're requiring sprinklers. So I think it's, the safety is going to be there. So when you say 18 months, when does your 18-month period starts from?
That 18 months would be from January 1st, 2008.
Okay. So this will end in the middle of 2009.
Mr. Yusefian, may I interrupt you for a point of news?
Yes.
It was just reported to me that Barack Obama is now the president-elect.
It is?
Yes.
Right.
And so I thought I would just interrupt for that bit of news. Back to you.
Thank you. Okay. So do we go home now?
It's eight o'clock. The polls just closed.
Unless there's people still in line waiting to go in.
So people in California, I guess, don't count.
Only your thunder.
Poor California people don't count. So this goes from January 1st, 2008, till, what, September? No, July?
June 30th.
June 30th.
If you do 18 months, if you do 18 months starting at January 1st, 2008.
Okay. So in reality, we're talking about how many months from now?
From that, well, from the end of December 31, which is when the plan checks would expire, it'd be six months, so that's.
So in reality, we're talking about six months. We're not talking even 18 months. Because your 18 months is going back.
Unless the recommendation of the report's changed, as I read it, the recommendation, actually, it wasn't a recommendation, but the commentary regarding the 18 months matches Los Angeles' 18-month plan check period, which I believe is the longest in the state.
Actually, I think what was in the report was to do an 18-month plan check, so it'd be 18 months from the time of submittal. But you could also, you could also do it as 18 months starting January 1, 2008, which would take all the projects out to June 30, 2009.
Mr. Yusefian, let me bring this back to you. Are you getting your questions answered?
I got this, yes, I'm getting these answered, except now I'm confused. If that's one year, this is only six months. How's that work?
Councilman Yusefian, I think that with respect to the entitlements, they were always tied to an additional year from whenever they were going to expire, so there was no set date. If you were set the date of the plan checks, it would go till June of 2009. And obviously, there's some flexibility here to make them co-extend if you'd like as well. So in other words, I think Mr. Khan, for example, suggested that you make sure that they, there's some consistency there so that the entitlements don't expire before the plan checks do. And that's, again, if that's, if the council wants to give us that direction, we can bring back those types of ordinance as well.
So we could, we could have an ordinance that they're all consistent?
Right.
All right, got my ass.
All right. Before I go back to Councilmember Najarian, let me go to Councilmember Weaver.
On the entitlements, I have no problems with the extension. On the others, at least on the sheet we got, there's three in plan checks without the permits, three in plan check, two already are in, under construction, two other plan checks extended. You know, in this economy, and for the next few years, you're just not going to get the loans. So you're sitting here trying to balance public safety with the reality of the marketplace. People have invested a lot of money to get to this point, and now caught in the crunch that so many millions of other people have. And I try to sit here and say, okay, fire safety, and I read the other things that are in here, electrical power generators, buildings located in the urban wildlife, and I just wonder, of these buildings that might be built without the new code, how many of them are going to catch on fire, burn down, or have other disasters occur within a year after they're built? I don't think that's realistic, even with the existing codes we have today under the UBC. How many structure fires are we seeing in Glendale of high-rise or new construction? We're just not seeing it. And if we do, we have a Class 1 fire department sitting out there that is on top of fires within a matter of minutes. So if I want to weigh it out, I say these few, whatever they are, whether they're residential or other, we just can't penalize them, and we have to give the extension. Now, what day you pick as the start date, I don't know, for 18 months, but I presume the end of that period, it can come back to council, and we can consider if we want to extend it again. Correct, Mr. Tom, or Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, before they expire.
Yes. We can do it on a case-by-case, or we can consider them all together.
Yeah.
They qualify me. Come on.
To do it on a case-by-case basis, that's something that falls within Mr. Tom's jurisdiction as a building.
Okay, but if we do it as.
As a class, yes.
Okay, as a class.
The council has the discretion on this issue.
I have no problem with doing that and evaluating in the future, because I just don't believe the economy's going to turn, that the credit market's going to open up six months or even a year. But the meantime, the ones that are ongoing, I know I've had discussions with Mr. Tom about it, but I'm still comfortable with the UBC for those that are already in the plan check going. Ones that are going to go into plan check this year under the new code, I also don't mind not postponing or delaying the payment of plan check fees, but making the plan checks fees due, fully due, before the COP can be obtained. That's when everything is ready to go, and you want to put people in the building, and you pay all the plan check fees. So that'd be delaying them from being paid upfront. I assume that if he's short on money to do plan check, he will come to council, and we will provide it. Now, I don't expect to see 50, 100 of these cases come running in here in the next six months or year. Somebody want to tell me that's going to happen?
Mr., well, let me stop.
I'm not done, but I'll listen to Mr. Starbird.
So have you finished your comments?
No.
Okay. Let's let him finish his comments, and then we'll go to Mr. Starbird in a moment.
So I'm willing to consider that. Anything starting this year has to go under the new code is going under the new code. I don't know how many that's going to be, but in this economy, it's not going to be many. The in-lie fees, we did an exception for Dr. Kay, that if he had housing that was market-rate housing, he could do it. At the time, you know the formula, we worked out on it. I'm not comfortable with doing that for everything else that comes along this time. The bottom line is, I just don't think there are that many. The system we have, a sprinkler systems and new construction, the risk factor that's there is going to be 50 years down the line, if at all. So I know Stuart and I have had the discussion, and I've wavered back and forth on it. I'm comfortable with the extension.
Okay. Councilmember, excuse me, City Manager Starbird, you had a comment.
Well, a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to point out that the qualifying bar, that the list that people have been referring to as the projects impacted, I've asked the staff, because of this limitation of KIVA, which frankly astounds me, that we don't have the ability to give you all of the information about all of the projects that are and have been in plan check, but we don't, we will with the new system. But I've asked the staff to review all of the significant projects they could think of, and whether or not they'd be impacted by this. This is the list of those projects, of which only two of them fall into the pre-January 8 category. Only two of them are really affected by this. I guess my reaction, and I apologize, Mr. Weaver, my reaction to his idea of deferring the fees isn't one that we addressed in here, and frankly, hadn't given any thought to.
I made it up.
Right, but could have considerable, could have considerable implications from a budget standpoint, in a budget that already is pressed. Your building fees in the neighborhood of $5 million. And if everybody asked for continuation of those until a CFO, which could be a year, 18 months, two years after permit, you could, you could be stacking up quite a bit of.
I know, we're playing with the reserves again, but I'm not asking to give them a discount of 50% or anything. I'm trying to react to the economy. If we want to keep construction going, fine. If not, yeah, just keep the planning check fees right where they are now, and we can slow down construction even more. I mean, I have no heartburn either way.
Again, my sense is that it isn't necessarily, I mean, a developer will tell you every cost has an impact, but it isn't, it isn't the plan check fee that is posing the significant problem now, it's the availability of credit and an attempt to wait out this market until credit loosens, and not having a project have to then go back through the plan review process, as well as then be re-engineered to bring it up to code. That is a more significant problem.
Maybe I ought to talk then about residential versus commercial. Because the small guy is going to have a bigger impact on plan check fees.
We've just had that question answered, however. Yes, Mr. Garcia?
I think I just wanted to add on to what Mr. Starbird's comment. I think the issue of whether you extend the plan checks is one issue, or the pre-2008 plan checks, and then the suggestion that plan check fees be waived or discounted or deferred is posed as an option if you don't want to extend the plan checks, that's an option to that. If you actually extend them, the issue, as Mrs. Starbird said, of the fees sort of becomes a moot issue if you've extended the plan checks.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian, you had a couple of comments, and just one second, and then after that, I'd like to try to draw this to some kind of conclusion. We've been beating this for getting along toward an hour now, and I'm not sure, other than, other than having moved from sucking children in the pool filters to two hours versus three hours on firewalls in a city where we almost have no structure fires, I kind of would like to draw this to some kind of conclusion, so we could have a vote, one way or the other.
I'll be ready to make a motion afterwards. All right. Done. With regard to Mr. Yusefian's comparison between a city that has a two-hour firewall with no sprinklers versus Glendale that has a one-hour firewall with sprinklers, that's an inappropriate comparison. What has to be compared is the homes built in Glendale under the 2007 code versus the 2008 code. Both homes have sprinklers. One house has one-hour walls. The other house has two-hour fire. One house has one-hour walls, the other house has two-hour firewalls. Which house is safer? Obviously, the one with the two-hour firewall. I think what we're trying to do, we feel very concerned that we're losing an industry for the next, who knows, year or so in Glendale. The developers have played an important role in making Glendale what it is, but the economy hits us all. We can't chase this industry by offering incentives and hoping that we're going to outrun the recession and the financial crisis. It's going to be with us longer than six months. It's going to be with us longer than a year. To come back in six months again and say, well, the economy hasn't recovered, let's extend it even further, I think is just bad policy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Najarian. The only comments I would add, since I have not made any yet, other than the minor editorial I made a moment ago, some quick comments, starting with the ethics issues that Councilmember Najarian raised earlier. Just a reminder to one and all that we do have at Councilmember Najarian's request, an ethics ordinance proposition coming back to us, which we found out earlier this evening, we think in early January or in January. So that would be an opportunity to address that. I certainly hope that with all this discussion about safety and which is a safer building, and the buildings that we're imagining are going to be burning down left and right, whether they're in our wildlife interface zone, or wilderness interface zone, or in the heart of the town, or out in our traditional single-family, I certainly hope, Mr. City Manager, that you will give a very, very stern and appropriate warning to our fire chief to get him up and training his staff immediately, because if he has not done that so far, then clearly he is not on top of a just devastatingly doomful issue that is facing this city. So I would think that he is training them for this horrifying foray into driving the City of Glendale into a very dangerous situation. So I want to make sure that our fire chief is endeavoring to do that. The other issue I want to talk about is, we've, again, as I mentioned, we move from children being sucked into pool filtering mechanism to fire safety issues, to calling it critical fire safety issues. I'm wondering how many people here have a 2007 automobile, since we were asking Mr. Lamb about how the auto business is. I'm wondering whether we should be worried that there are some people driving 2007 vehicles, because 2008 vehicles have newer safety features on them. And so I don't want to think about our citizens out there driving around in cars that might have last-year safety features. There is an issue to be looked at, and I agree. And if I'm sounding like I'm, you know, just dripping in sarcasm, it's because we've been at this for a number of days, and quite a while tonight, and it's just focusing on the same issue over and over, which is this balance that we all get, everybody in this room, I think, and probably looking in, gets it. There is a balance between public safety and economic realism. And the fact is that not only City of Glendale, but every city and every municipal entity in America balances this issue all the time. When this city council votes on any kind of item out there that touches on the public's safety, they don't look at every conceivable possible disaster that could occur. Mr. Weaver, you were with the Corps of Engineers. When you built projects, did you look at every conce, did you build it for the worst possible case scenario?
No, you build for standard 100-year flood control projects, not the standard project flood, which is about 230. Can't afford to do that.
And so my point is not to say it's not important, or that we shouldn't examine it, it's that it is a balance of the economy of our city, and no, you are absolutely right, Mr. Najarian, we can't chase the economy, but we do have to chase a conclusion to this discussion, and we do have to bring it to a vote. And I would encourage my colleagues to try to do that at this time.
Mr. Mayor, could we do what you've done many times? Break them down. Can we just get the entitlements first and get out of the way?
If that's what my colleagues would like to do.
Then I'll move to extend the entitlements for a year.
Second.
All right, so you want to go through these, item by item?
Well, I'd be quicker.
From two years to three years.
Yeah.
Correct. So the motion would be to extend the discretionary entitlements from two years to three years, and it's directing staff to bring back an ordinance to effectuate that change.
Yes.
All right. All right, let's ...
That's my motion.
All right.
If there's a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that?
Get that out of the way.
There was initially a second, but Councilmember Yusefian.
Yusefian. All right. Mr. Kasaki.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
All right.
Now, the extension of the few that there are to 18 months, it'd be, which is the best way to go? 18 months or putting them all on the same date?
That's really a policy call for the council.
Because if it's individual, then the building official controls.
No, the issue is here is to, how long you want to extend it? Do you want to extend it 18 months, starting January 1, 2008, a longer period, or do you want to extend it from the period of the original submittal?
Mr. City Manager.
Just a suggestion. Rather than calling it extending it 18 months, right now, from any project after January 1 is a year. You would be extending it an additional six months if you did an 18-month plan check, or you'd be extending it a year if you did a two-year plan check effectiveness. Extending 18 months makes it sound like you're adding extra 18 months.
That's confusing, that's what I'm asking.
Right. And then the question is, if, right now, it is from the time the application is submitted, it's a year. But you could set a date certain, so that, for example, if it's going to be June 30, then anything that was submitted in '08 would have at least until June 30, or they might have time beyond that if you granted 18 months in the time of submittal.
If I said 31 December '09, for those.
Then you'd be granting at least a one-year extension, from what's available now.
Right. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Which will be consistent with the planning departments.
Mr. ...
Just a small technicality that I mentioned to Mr. Garcia. The question, what we're talking about here is the '07 projects, but it would make sense to have the, anything filed in '08 would also be subject to an extension if it would have extended their life as well. It doesn't change what's code they're under. It only allows them to be effective, so if for some reason, they too weren't able to pull their building permits, they don't have to go back to the plan check again and serve those fees.
'07 and '08, it's all.
All right, is that your motion?
Yes.
So how did we get to a year now? Was that?
That's what he suggested, that's the motion I was to make.
After you recommended it.
No, I didn't.
If we go a year, it'll go another year.
No, I didn't. I was just pointing out how to calculate it.
Trying to get a common ...
I wasn't intending to recommend it.
I'm glad you didn't say two years.
No, I wasn't intending to recommend anything, I was only clarifying, sir.
All right. Is that your motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Kasaki.
Councilmembers Najarian.
No.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
The last is the in-lu. Is there anything else?
That was the only issue.
Just the in-lu.
Just the in-lu.
And the discussion there was ...
Do you want to provide policy direction on what to do about the in-lu fee with respect to ownership projects?
Mr. Quintero.
Well, on the in-lu fee, I was interested in creating at-market-rate housing around the transportation center, and I think that's the goal of the state, and we've been, we know what people are interested in. So that was my interest, not in different areas within the San Fernando Road corridor or anywhere else, only in ...
Say, nothing, status quo.
So for me, no, yeah, status quo.
I'm coming.
Well, I believe we need this in the form of a ...
Either a motion, or you can make, if there's no motion, there's no motion.
Well, if there's a consensus, yes, Mr. Yusefian.
As Mr. Weaver was saying, to help matters, how about we make the in-lu fee payment payable at the time of certificate of occupancy? That way, it would help them. Don't change it, don't waive it, just say during, when, right before you get a certificate of occupancy, you got a in-lu fee. So this way, it makes it easier for them to finance.
Well, let me ask you a question. Are you referring to, as a general policy, or only in the area where Mr. Quintero was talking about?
No, as a general policy for a period of one year.
Okay. Well, we've got two competing issues.
How does that affect the project near the transportation center? It wouldn't affect it.
Wouldn't affect it.
No, they would just have to pay the in-lu.
Right.
But after they get the project built, so that's why they don't have to finance the cost of it.
I can go along with that.
Just a question for Mr. Yusefian. Yusefian, for one year, so that means for any project that pulls a permit within one year? Or ...
Yeah, I want the timeline to be the same as these.
Okay. So any project, let me suggest, any project that pulls permits prior to December 31 of '09.
Right. And then they don't have to pay the in-lu until they finish the project.
Mr. Tom may not be happy with all this, but ...
All right, well, right now, we haven't done anything with this policy, so let's see if there's a ...
I'll second that.
Well, was that a motion, Mr. Yusefian?
Yeah.
All right, and a second. Do we have any discussion on that point? On that issue? All right, hearing none. Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, when are these ordinances coming back to us?
The plan check one, I anticipate will come back on November 18, because I'd like to have it introduced and then adopted on the 25th, so we don't have to adopt it as an urgency. The other ones will come back then, or very shortly thereafter.
Could you bring them all at the same time, so we can ...
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, I thank you all for your time and attention. Mr. City Clerk, do we have anything else on the ... I do want to remind ...
Listed, there is a hearing, Director of Planning, Appeal of tentative parcel map.
Right, we have already discussed.
Although, do we need to take action to set it to a date certain without further public notice?
Right, and there is a motion. The motion does continue to the date certain.
So if I may read the items in the record.
Please, thank you so much.
A 9A is Director of Planning regarding Appeal of tentative parcel map number GLN 1623, located at 3525 Altura Avenue, at A1 is a motion continuing the public hearing to November 18, 2008, without further public notice.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kasaki. Do we have ...
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
There's no new business or other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn in memory of Marion Albonian?
Marion Albonian.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.